Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, March 22, 2017, to order. Can we have a roll call, please, Mr. Alexandrovich?
Yes. Mrs. Larson?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mrs. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Nielsen?
Here.
Mr. Winkowski?
Not yet.
And I am here.
Okay, yes, she's absent. The meeting has been properly posted and we have a quorum. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item three, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Lewis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Item four is community comment. Would anyone in the audience like to make a comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to item five, consent agenda. Would any board member like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gamble, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Item six is school board announcements, are there any announcements?
I was lucky enough to have breakfast last Friday with Dr. Miller for the Student of the Month at the Forest Park Middle School. What a wonderful group of students and parents.
Great, thank you. Are there any other announcements? All right, hearing none. Item seven is the school board calendar. We have a regular board meeting on April 12, 2017, here at the Education and Community Center at 6 o'clock PM, and our annual reorganization meeting, April 26, 2017, here at the ECC at 6 o'clock PM. Item eight are board liaison reports, do we have any liaison reports tonight?
I have some. I have some for HR and policy discussion with Dr. Miller. I can roll through four topics, the first being policies. As you know, for the last two meetings, including tonight, we haven't had much policy work. However, we have four policies on the docket to be reviewed at either the next meeting or the meeting after, and those would be animals in the classroom, gifted and talented, summer school, and graduation requirements. By the end of April, I think we have a couple of meetings that don't have much on the agenda, so we'll plan for some policy review at that time. Insurance renewal, Mr. Millsor and Dr. Miller are currently working with the insurance consultants to review the current health and dental insurance plans and potential bids on those plans. Thirdly, staffing, an initial draft of a staffing plan for 2017 has been completed, and there are some preliminary notices of non-renewal that will be presented to us tonight. There are also some contractually overstaffed positions that we'll review as well. And then the final staffing plan will be presented in mid-May, I believe that's correct. Dr. Miller?
Yes.
And then finally, excuse me, finally, Dr. Miller is currently in the process of interviewing and hiring for 15 vacancies caused by retirements at the end of this year.
For the record, Mrs. Winkowski arrived at 6:02. Are there any questions for Mr. Lewis? Item nine, 9A, reports and presentations, we have the instructional services report, which includes the annual assessment report, world language trip approval, youth options requests, the technical excellence scholarship approval, and these are all action items.
Good evening. We have, as you stated, four things for the board this evening, and three of them we're going to be looking for some board action on, and so we'll start one at a time with more of the procedural items, and then we'll get to the annual assessment report, I think, at the end. And I want to start with the annual academic excellence scholarship nominees and technical excellence scholarship nominees. The information for those are included in the board packet and identifies those students who met the criteria, and it lists those award winners as well as the alternates, and so we'll be looking for a motion from the board tonight to approve those recipients.
So I'll make a motion to approve the recipients of the technical excellence scholarship approval, or technical excellence scholarship awards.
Motion by Mr. Lewis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Larson, is there any discussion?
It's like to acknowledge the accomplishment of those students.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Thank you.
Yep, and then, Mr. Lewis, that was for the technical excellence scholarship winners, correct? So we'll look for a subsequent motion then for the academic excellence scholarship winners.
Okay, I apologize, I probably could've made one for both.
That's okay.
But I can make a motion to the academic excellence.
You got it.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Lewis and a second by Mrs. Larson for the 2017 academic excellence scholarship nominees. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Thank you.
Yep, second, I would invite Mrs. Rock up to present the youth options requests for fall of 2017.
Hi. We have some students that have applied for and met the criteria for youth options offerings. We vetted the course offerings, and they all meet approval for high school credit as they complete their courses offsite at the post-secondary institution.
And this is for five separate students, correct?
Correct, yep. They've applied for classes like Calc II, Spanish 203, Spanish and Grammar, Calc III, so classes that far supersede what we offer at the high school.
So we're looking for a motion to approve the fall, it is fall, correct?
Yes.
2017 youth options requests.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Gamble, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Larson, is there any discussion?
Just a question on the third semester Spanish, so if you've taken, what's the equivalency of our one year of Spanish relative to this?
Of our first year of Spanish or our highest level of Spanish?
Well, I'm assuming a student could be in their fourth year of Spanish, correct, at Franklin High School?
Correct.
And that would be less than third semester of Spanish?
Correct, yes, yes.
But we have a program that does allow students to get credit?
At the fifth level for CAP, and they can get credit that way, but these classes are even beyond the offering that they would receive at the high school level and at the CAP level.
I guess I really don't understand how that's, because they can get, if they go through the CAP program, how does that work?
It's their fifth year, so it's the end, it's their capstone course at the high school, so all of these students that have applied for Spanish 203, Spanish Grammar, and the Spanish Conversation course, those students have already taken the courses at the high school, they've exhausted those opportunities.
I understand that you can, there's a college equivalent, or do we not?
They've taken a CAP course, these students have.
Taken a CAP course, and the way that works is you can go to college, and you would get, you take a couple semesters and you would have, I don't understand, you know what I'm talking about?
I do understand, so the students actually take the class at the high school, and if they apply and satisfy the requirements of CAP, then they're awarded credit, which is the case of these students. They don't go offsite, they stay at school, actually. Ms. Johnson teaches the course.
And how many credits would they receive then?
They receive the equivalent similar to what we offer through youth options.
I can explain that just a little bit, because Stephanie actually took that class last year, and she received 16 college credits.
Through the testing and retroactive credits?
For taking the CAP class and passing the test, 16 college credits. So after her first semester freshman, she'll actually have junior status with the other classes that she got with her AP and her CAP. But that was going to be the question I was going to ask, that they did take the CAP class at the high school?
Correct.
So they have taken all the options at the high school.
Correct, yes.
The extra credits you're referencing are a result of that placement testing?
The testing that they, that she hears.
That allowed them to get retroactive credit.
Right.
Also, the nursing assistant certificate, can they get that at the high school?
Not currently, we are.
I thought there was a port we had.
Yeah, so there is, through our area consortium, some spots in the summer that allow up to this year, seven students to take it through that process, but we don't offer it typically at the high school, other than through that summer option outside the school year through that consortium. So that's our only current opportunity for that certification, but it's something we're working on with MATEC right now.
So technically, this person could access that option?
Because it's not, it doesn't fall in the academic year, it doesn't necessarily meet that criteria. Plus, there's a selection process, because we always get more applicants than we have available seats. So this particular student was not selected for that summer opportunity. But it's not a course currently offered by the high school, we don't offer CNA.
Somebody else comes in for summer program to do that then?
MATEC provides that service to our students. We pay them through the consortium offsite at MATEC Oak Creek.
Okay. And these courses do have, we do pay the tuition, and I understand it's capped, right? Is that right?
There's a set rate. There's a set rate.
So it's what, $1,000 a credit? I don't, I'm looking for the exact number.
Yeah, it depends on the, it depends on the institution and the course.
So, and you guys all know that I'm not going to vote for this, because I'm opposed to using our resources outside of our billing and our students, so I will vote no. I want to explain that to the board.
I just want to comment on that, the issue, which is fine that you, that a board member would vote no, but the issue of not voting no, as a board member, when the state requires us to vote unless, now, we meet the, our students all meet the requirements, so therefore we are required to vote yes, because we meet the requirements. Now, if we didn't meet the requirements, we could vote no.
Correct, it's a statutory requirement, yeah.
So if there is a problem with this issue, shouldn't that go to the state level? I mean, the complaint, justifiably, should go to the state level regarding this issue, which, which I think is fine, that if there's a problem, because otherwise, it makes it look like we're doing, in my opinion, we're doing something wrong with the no vote. That's just my opinion, but, I mean, you're still allowed to vote, obviously, the way you choose, but that's my opinion on it.
If we're really not allowed to, as a board, vote no, why do we vote at all?
In case we don't meet the requirement.
But if we meet the requirement, and that's presented to us, there's no need for a vote.
Well, because it's being presented to us to say that we are meeting the requirement.
Oh.
Am I correct?
No. It's a required board vote, because it's an action item. However, the state in Section 11855 requires that we vote yes, having the students meet those requirements. And I think, Linda, to your point, I just think it would provide our students an opportunity they don't have in our district, and I've stated that before, so I think these youth option requests are a good thing for our students. If we had 100 or 200 of these requests, I again would think it would be a good thing for our district to have these types of requests, so.
Well, I think we would adjust the curriculum if we had those kind of requests, we would make sure we could provide that in the district, so.
But I'll make a motion to approve these youth option requests.
Oh, we already have a motion. Motion by Mr. Gamble, second by Mrs. Larson. And any more discussion?
You would just, just to cap it off, you think that if they all meet the requirements, that the administration could just certify that they meet the requirements, so I understand, Alan, what you're saying. Why do we have to vote yes? Because we have to vote yes, but that's the state statute, so.
Bring that back to the board to discuss further in terms of what the statute actually says. I think we should investigate that further at a future meeting.
But it's like, like the nursing, I think Oak Creek offers this class, you know, Oak Creek, I think they have like 15 spots?
Yeah, so most high schools offer it through some sort of agreement with a higher ed institution who provides the course. I don't think the, unless the course has been in place in the high school for many, many years, as those have rolled out, they've moved those requirements to higher ed to deliver those, the CNA certification, so, but you're right, there are area schools that do offer CNA.
Any other discussion? Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Yes. Mrs. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Gamble?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
Mrs. Winkowski?
No.
And I say yes.
Motion carries 6 to 1. Thank you.
Next, we have a world language field trip, and I would invite up Ms. Johnson and Ms. Ovai from our world language department at the high school to present to you some information on the trip.
Hi.
So we wanted to, we would like to travel to Spain next summer, summer of 2018, with our students for a homestay program. We have a sister school there in Madrid, and we would like to, we would like to visit them and spend nine days in Madrid, is that right? Nine days in Madrid with the sister school students, and then a two-day visit to Barcelona after that, just so they could come here and contrast the two cities.
I guess I'm a little confused on the date, because this says 2018, and then the schedule says 2019.
That's a typo, I'm sorry.
So it really is 201?
It's 2018.
Okay, just look at it, okay.
The trip, what fundraising, are you planning any fundraising activities, or is it?
No.
No fundraising, okay. And the estimated cost of 2,600 per student includes chaperone expenses?
Yes.
And do the chaperones also stay with host families?
Yes.
Oh, that's good.
I would just offer, this is a trip that we've offered before, and it has been a tremendous learning experience for our students, so.
But it's going to be only in Spain?
Yes.
Second every other year? Are you trying to do?
Yeah.
Yep, they were here this fall.
Yeah.
Went to a band competition, for them, a football game, yeah. So we're also looking for a motion?
Be a motion to approve the trip request.
I'd like that motion.
So we have a motion by Mr. Lewis to approve the 2017 Spanish trip proposal for June 2018. Okay. Motion by Mr. Lewis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Larson, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extension, motion carries. Enjoy your trip.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Finally, from Instructional Services this evening, we have our annual assessment report, and obviously, the report was available. A lot of the information in the report is information we've shared at previous reports, but Mr. Reuter and I thought it was important to consolidate it here, so that we could address questions. You're going to notice that we've taken liberty this year to expand our definition of college and career readiness beyond the state-required assessments. We feel like if we're going to keep you informed on the kinds of things we're doing to prepare our students, that we need to broaden that metric beyond just those tests. And so we've added a section this year that refers to things like youth apprenticeship, internship certifications, professional certifications earned by students, the work keys assessment, again, just to provide you some more context for the types of experiences our students have. Along with that, I did include some data in here related to students who graduate within six years of entering higher ed with a degree from the National Clearinghouse. This is data that we really got for the first time this year, and it's data we're going to continue to focus on and track. Our school counselors are using that data right now to just think about how we're preparing kids. You've heard me say before the importance of exposing kids to a variety of career opportunities in high school, so that they can make better post-secondary decisions may potentially lead to higher graduation rates for our students at the post-secondary level. And so this is a nice metric for us to kind of track that out and get a sense of how our kids are doing. So again, a lot of this information had been shared previously, and I'd be open to any questions that you have about any of the information in the report.
So just a higher-level question, and this is on the ACT and the DLM data that you have. Obviously, our college and career readiness percentages are, in some cases, much greater than the national average, but year over year, from 2014 to 2015, we've decreased in every category.
Yeah.
That includes ELA, reading, science, and math. Have you guys been able to at least identify some priorities that have come out of at least reading that data?
Yeah, you know, it's interesting, those fluctuations, it's really one class, right, it's a class of juniors, and so, you know, we're hoping that over time, we'll see varying trends in that data, but varying class sizes, I mean, some of these class sizes, it's the difference between 30 and 40 students, so all of those factors kind of come into play. That said, we want to improve, obviously, all our data across the board. You heard me talk at the beginning of the year about those data dashboards that we had developed, where we had identified specific college readiness bands that students were struggling in, and we provided all that information to our teachers. Teachers continue to administer interim assessments that use the ACT benchmarks throughout the school year. They get very specific data on their students in each of these areas and those skill bands, and then we've been continuing to provide them with a variety of strategies they can use to work with those students to try to improve their performance there. So, you know, there are always varying reasons for why those metrics change. At the same time, we take the data seriously and are trying to equip our teachers with what they need to improve in those areas.
I'm looking at the, I guess this is the second, for the ELA demographic chart?
For the ACT?
This page, page four.
Okay.
And ELA, English, French, Arts, is that what it is?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Okay. Students with disability, with a disability, what is, how's that group defined? Is it a student that has, obviously, it's more than, what is the definition of a student with disability?
Yeah, it's any student that has an individualized education plan.
So, and these are, I mean, they're not physical disabilities, these are learning disability, language arts, or, they're not cognizantly disabled, they're art development disabled, these are?
Yeah, so a couple of things on that. One, the DLM, the Dynamic Learning Maps Assessment, is administered to our, less than 1% or 1% of our significantly cognitively disabled students, and that data is factored into these scores, because that assessment is designed specifically to assess those students. So that's the state metric for those students, and it's included here. In addition to that, though, just broadly speaking, that category of students with a disability includes a variety of defined disabilities for students.
So it's generally anyone with an IEP, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. So there's subgroups within here, obviously.
Mm-hmm.
And do they take it with accommodations at all?
Many of the students do, it's an IEP team decision, so it's based on an individual student's particular needs, but many students do have some form of accommodations, whether it be, in some cases, additional time, depending on the assessment, additional time, frequent breaks, those type of things.
I guess when I look at, you know, how different these are, should I expect better?
I think we all should, or, you know, that's our plan. When I look at the district data relative to the state data, we're outperforming the state average, but I think that there's general consensus across the country that our students are underperforming relative to where they should be, and that's driving a lot of district initiatives, as well as state initiatives around improving student achievement, particularly in the state of Wisconsin, targeting the areas of reading and writing.
And I guess they certainly are doing better in ELA than math, but, okay. Thank you.
And one, just one last question, and it's, this is page six, related to the Wisconsin Forward exam, and trending from third grade to eighth grade, when we see like subjects being tested in ELA?
Yeah.
And seeing a decrease almost year over year, in some cases, it's minuscule points of a percentage point, but what is the district doing, at least in trying to affect that trend?
Yeah, so that's a very good question, Mr. Lewis. As I shared earlier in the year, we've worked this year to align our writing curriculum, so that our curriculum is aligned K-8, previously hadn't done, and next year, reading curriculum will be aligned K-8, so we have rigorous expectations as they progress through the K-8 system, and then connecting that to college and career readiness standards, ACT standards at the high school level. So we've already started to do some of that work, because that is an area of concern, as well as to your question previously, Mrs. Winkowski, we're looking at, we take the subgroup data very seriously, because we know there are areas that need to improve, and through our curriculum design, that we're aligning through literacy, we're looking at how to support all learners, not just specific subgroups or the general population.
Yeah, Mr. Lewis, that really is a really good question, that data trend continues all the way through junior year on the ACT.
And I suspect that it's probably evident in the national data, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, you can probably assume as someone gets older, that if you test the same subject, you would hope that there'd be an increase, but generally.
Well, expectations raise, so our local expectations have to raise as well, right? Standards.
And it does speak to skill gaps that are continuing to develop over time and widening, right? And that's the reason for some of that, so we recognize that. In fact, when we look at the data and look at the trends, it's one of the first things we talk about, and how can we reverse that trend and close those gaps, so.
Thanks.
Are there any other questions?
What is the, under the certifications, in 1516, you have the Microsoft MOUS?
Yeah, it's a Microsoft Office User Specialist Certification, so these are students who are industry-certified in Microsoft Office applications.
One last question, so the work key assessment, who takes?
So all juniors take the work keys, it's a required state assessment, just like the ACT, so they take the ACT one day, and they take the work keys the next day.
These are, these are done on those virtual days now, right?
Mm-hmm, so the ACT is administered on the virtual day, and then the ACT Aspire is on the second virtual day in April. Work Keys is administered with school in session the day after the ACT.
Is that working out well?
Yeah, the virtual days, I don't want to speak for high school administration, but I think the testing day piece of that has been really positive. The attendance for testing has been really high. We've had a small, small percentage of kids that haven't shown up for testing those days. We've had really positive, strong testing conditions for our students, they're not being distracted by bells or student movement throughout the building, so that's been very positive. We're continuing to work on kind of that, the rest of that piece for our students. This year, the virtual day consisted of academic and career planning activities for our students in the non-tested grades, and had an opportunity to work with their school counselors and their gold block instructors to kind of work through some of those career readiness activities and career exploration-based activities, and we're continuing every year to refine that process, so that we can make as meaningful as possible and make sure our students benefit.
And you opt out of the work keys?
Yeah, the state allows you to opt out of any state administrative assessment.
And generally, what do the levels mean, or is there some other place I should look at to know what?
Yeah, so ultimately, it's just the performance level in all of those bullet-pointed areas above, and they have specific benchmarks where they kind of rate the student based on their performance across all of those areas, and you can kind of think of it on a continuum from platinum, being the highest performing student, down to no certificate, which is a student who didn't meet the minimum benchmarks for readiness as determined for those areas above. So they basically, students perform in one of those bands, and then they receive a certificate based on that. But it's the six bullet points above, those are the areas that they're scoring.
So it's percent correct?
It's percent correct, but they also weight certain questions more heavily than others, so more complex tasks have a heavier weight and affect the overall score more.
Are there any other questions?
All right, thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to item 9B, we have a WASB presentation. Mr. Millsor, did you want to start us off, or should we just?
I think we can have the representatives from WASB come up and join us at the table.
They have a.
We'll need one more chair. Oh, well, thank you. We have Boy Scout Troop 537 here today, thank you very much.
I am Louis Burchmore with Wisconsin Association of School Lords, I'd be heading up the search team. I have with me Connie Schessel and Dr. George Stephan. You might want to give a little bit of introduction, and then we've got some things to distribute, and I'll give you a little bit of a presentation. I have with me Connie Schessel and Dr. George Stephan. You might want to give a little bit of introduction, and then we've got some things to distribute, and I'll give you a little bit of a presentation.
Welcome.
Thank you. You all received a copy of the search services proposal via electronic communication, and I always know that board members read all their communications thoroughly, so because of that, I will just try and do a summary of that, open it up to questions, and let you move forward from there. How's that sound? The Wisconsin Association of School Boards has been handling search services throughout the state of Wisconsin for over twenty-five years. We only serve the state of Wisconsin. And so, in order to survive for twenty-five years with school districts of the state of Wisconsin, you obviously have to do a good job, repeat business, and we're here for you, not only through the search, but after the search, to provide services to your school district. I have a quick checklist that I'll distribute at the end of the meeting, as well as a calendar that is a conceptual calendar, so you can see its layout. Sometimes what people will do is get focused on those things rather than all of the communication that exists at the time. We have several phases to the search, and the Wisconsin Association of School Boards' service plan is designed to meet your local needs. So, with that, some school districts will take the entire gamut of services, some will take parts of it, some will use certain phases because they feel their district needs more in a particular phase, some will use less. And each district is a little different. You have a team here of a human resources director, you have other leadership staff, you have a business manager, you have an administrative assistant, you may have a school board committee you want to set up to do this. And it'll impact how you put it together based upon what you may perceive as internal candidates in your school district. In a district of this size, we'll always have somebody that will be considered an internal candidate for the position. And in order for you to have a clear search process, you want to make sure you talk about those things in the planning process. So, that brings me to the first phase. We consider the planning process, and in the planning process, we will sit down with you in a closed session, discuss how you want to handle interviews, how you want to schedule interviews, how you want to think about interview teams. We'll talk about essay questions, which are part of the application process, we think is very important because, obviously, in a high-level position, you would expect the people to have the art of articulation publicly, but you'd like to see how they write. Some people will change up the process to have some written essay questions that they'll submit ahead of time, and then people will ask, when they come in, to come in a half hour early and do an extemporaneous response as well. And that's all the things we would talk about in designing the process. We also think that your school community would probably benefit from some focus groups. Sometimes, people like focus groups designed to be for, say, elementary staff, something for the middle school staff, something for the high school staff, leadership, selected community members, and the community as a whole. But in a district of this size, you probably won't get everybody to attend those meetings, so we offer the ability to link an electronic survey as well to your communication effort so we can get that together. Because of the timeframe, you probably want to have a general posting of the position, and the focus groups would be designed to help in the selection of your candidates. That'll keep the process moving. And I've made some, when we pass out the conceptual calendar, I've made some assumptions. I've tried to lay out a three-week posting, an assumption that you would want to get the person to start July one with that date negotiable, depending upon how you make your decision and where the person may come from. We also would want the opportunity to develop a community, I'll say, a brochure about the community would be the best way to say it. We'll have information about the community, so it'd be an electronic proposal. We'll ask you if you have information you want to pass out to a candidate as well for anybody that actually takes the step to apply. Some people want to send information out only after the person has completed the entire application process. Some people will say their webpage has enough information on it, let the people do some looking. Those are all the things that we talk about in the planning process. The most important piece of that is to get it together so that in our process, we can get it posted as part of our National Affiliation of Superintendent Searchers, which goes out to over thirty-five states, has sixty-four consultants throughout the nation. There are all school boards associations that do that. We post at over twenty universities, and we do active recruitment to the extent that we will notify people that have asked to be notified of openings throughout the state, or people that have mentioned to the consultants, and we have over six consultants throughout the state about positions. And we send an email out to them, and then they can decide to apply. One of the things you'll find out about our process is we do not consider candidates until somebody's completed the whole process. So, when we say we will give you all candidate materials, we will give you the materials for people that have completed the entire application process. Our application process includes introductory letter, it includes the completion of the application, it requires somebody to complete the essay questions, three letters of reference, and copies or exact transcripts, and then we ask that the person that's finally selected that the transcripts be given. Then, while that's being done, there's interview preparation that needs to take place with the board. We need to decide who you want to use on your interview teams, or whether you just want to have the Board of Education do an interview, whether you want to have community forums. Let me play that out a little bit for you. In a first interview, some boards like to have more than just the Board of Education input. They like to have maybe some staff, they may just want to have some community members, and they may want to say, we want to have a number of people, and we'll do three committees. And you'll have board representatives on each, you'll finish the first night of the interviews, all first interviews, and you'll do a debriefing. The Board of Education will add their comments after everybody else has provided theirs, they'll dismiss the group, and they will decide who they want to bring in for second interviews. Second interviews, some people like to have a community forum. You get to see how the people engage in a community forum, and then also, the board will do interviews later on. Some boards of education like to do their first interviews themselves, they like a community forum, and then they'll do second interviews. We talk about the pros and cons and what's happening in the district in the planning session. You're not, you don't decide that. One of the things you'll notice, we included on, I believe it's page eleven of the proposal, the range for what a search would cost. That's because you will pay for what you use. So, if you decide you're going to use some services, and it can be done in less, or you don't need that, you won't pay that amount. So, I gave you a range of eight to fourteen thousand dollars because we haven't talked yet about that. But you get to, say, if you want not to exceed, or you want to be notified if we're at a certain point before you go any farther, all that will occur as part of the process. Now, we will take the interview information, the candidate application information, compile it. You can get written copies of all the materials, or you can get electronic. Most boards like electronic at this point. It saves costs, and they have the ability to look at it in a more casual time and over the period. We will rank the candidates in tiers. You can have that information before you complete your ranking, you can have it on the night when you would do group ranking. We will do a top tier, a middle tier, and a low tier, and we'll even identify which best in those tiers. One of the things that boards of education are real protective of, and I would be the same way if I served on the Board of Education, is the time involved. Okay, this is the most important thing you will do as a hire, this is the employee you're supposed to hire. So, we think it's very important that a board have an opportunity to see all of the candidate materials. If you see our ranking and you just want to focus on the top tier, that's your choice, but you need to see all of the materials. They are your materials. They're not, we're not going to come to the meeting, say, look at them, take them back, and then you don't have access. That will not be the case. You will have all of the candidate information. The reason I'm spending the time with this is if you think that as you're starting to talk about this process, you have some people that are going to be involved or think about applying, you want to make sure that they're not in with you in your discussions as you plan this out, because it could taint how people see the ability to apply for a position. Your candidate pool, if you want to get everybody to, most people to apply, you want them to feel that you don't have a preference to a candidate. And that's where some of the discussion takes place as to how we work either with interim administrators, sitting administrators, retiring administrators, et cetera. And that's all a local decision. When I say the interview preparation, we have a resource binder that we put together for the district. It'll have tips about interviewing, it'll have interview questions, it'll have profile information about salaries and fringe benefits and comparables. We will have your electronic brochure, we'll have posting information, we'll help you with that, if you need help with posting for the meetings and things of that nature. We also take care of notifying all candidates. Once you decide who's going to be first interviewed, we will notify all the candidates that are not selected for a first interview, that they're out of the process. We will do that. That wouldn't come off a district stationery, we would identify that as part of the district. We believe that your leadership needs to focus on running the school district. This is not, this can't take over their job, the school district needs to run. And so, that's very important. So, that will complete the process. We would ask for suggested interview questions from board members. I would work with the team to try and put that so that none of the questions cross over to the protected categories or identification. One of the things I identified, if you have a community forum, you will want to use an outside facilitator, especially in a district, which will get high media coverage, and you probably will have some people that may press the line. You, as a board member or an administrator, don't want to be in a position to say, no, you can't ask that question. You want the person that's going to be leading the district to take that arrow, not yourself. So, that's very important to remember, that's why you're using a consultant in that process. And then, a final piece is, once you decide who's going to be advancing from a first interview to a second interview, then you will ask some board members to think about doing some personal contact to some other board members. We will do the formal candidate background checks, the criminal, financial, and educational. But it's always good for board members to do a little calling, because board members will talk to board members differently, and then we'll talk to somebody else. At that time, we also use both how we're screening and making our recommendation, we're using all our consultants throughout the state and all of the rest of the WASB staff for information they may have about anybody that's applying, so we can get a good background on that. And then we will send the communication out about second interviews as well. And once the board makes the decision as to who they would like to offer the contract, you have to decide if you want to do a community visit or not. We have that in the calendar. Most school districts don't exercise a community visit because Wisconsin isn't that large that you won't know enough about the candidates and things of that nature. And it gives you the option. We always put a date as an optional, because it could be that you, you know, I've, most board members will say, remarking in a humorous fashion, that if somebody applies from Hawaii and they're a finalist, we're all going to do that community visit. That's your choice, that's not going to be my choice, you make that choice. But, in essence, when we get, we keep the board in control of the process, so you don't identify who is the final, final selection that you're negotiating with until the person says yes on the contract. Otherwise, you lose your negotiations. Key on that. And we would recommend that you either have your legal counsel, or you can use the WASB to review your existing district administrator contract so that you identify what you have to offer and what you may offer in addition as well. It sometimes puts the existing leadership staff in a difficult position if they're trying to make that recommendation, because obviously, what happens with the superintendent has an effect on other leaders. And finally, after the person has been selected, then we would draft some letters that could be put on district stationery, signed by the board president indicating this is the final selection, and the other two or three candidates are not selected. And ultimately, we would develop a press release, if you'd like our assistance in that. Some districts will want to do their own press release, some people will just ask for a sample from us, and then design it, your choice. And then ultimately, the last piece is, we suggest that, and it's part of the process in order to obtain the guarantee of services, that after the person has been placed for sixty to ninety days, we come back for goal setting and mutual team goal expectations. We can also offer services that talk about superintendent evaluation down the process as well. I believe that covers in summary fashion our entire services. So, if I could ask George to pass out the quick checklist, and Connie to pass out the calendar of expectations, and Board President Evans, I gave you my card because I know electronically you didn't receive it, you can pass those around if you want, or you can play cards with them, that's your choice.
Already done.
Right, or just true. But I'll take questions at this point, if you have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Linda.
Thanks.
Yes. So, on page four, under planning, you talk about a list of activities the board and the president superintendent agree upon in order to get, to get us ready to search for the new leader. What are those activities, other than a schedule, or is it more, you know, what are we looking for, or?
No, what we would, we would, we have a vacancy information form we would electronically send to the district, and either the administrative assistant or your interim superintendent will put together some background information so we can put a brochure together. We'd also identify if there are specific issues that we need to be aware of that are going to come up when candidates start doing some checking about the district, so we can have a little bit of background. If it's, we need to know, we need to see your strategic plan, if you should have your budget, is there a pressing issue, like you've been successful with a referendum, obviously, you're going to deal with facility, building a school, and things of this nature. Somebody might ask you, what's the trap? When's the final plan going to be developed? Those are the things you would do. It doesn't have to be from a district administrator, but one of the things that occurs in some, in some districts is, there's not a professional, they've had a professional separation, but it hasn't been a happy separation, so they don't want the existing administrator involved in the search for the next person. So, I need to know that, so I need, so I have an identified person I can go to for information. We deal with the situation that exists so that the district looks like they're not spinning their wheels when a question comes up. We want to be ahead of the questions. That's the reason we go through the planning, and those are the types of questions I'd be asking in a planning session. All things you probably can answer with your experience on the board.
Possibly.
I bet.
And what, what about our, you know, you talk about the focus groups, students, staff, and community. What do they bring to the process? You know, we're making the decision, so what is their role, what would they bring? would they bring?
You want to have, our focus questions are designed to see, first of all, what do you see as positive about the, if we're doing the electronic survey, we'll ask leadership characteristics they're looking for from somebody. When we have the verbal focus groups, we'll ask, what do you see as positive things about the community? What do you think is positive about the school district? What are the issues or challenges the school district is facing? And then we'll ask them to identify leadership strengths, ask them to identify advice they might want to give the next superintendent. The purpose is to make sure that you have a pulse as a board of education on what the community is seeing. Because I know your seven board members, I know you all have your community, communication circle, but it's not the entire community. We want to make sure that you get a chance to get the entire community's perception. You decide how much weight you want to put on it. That's the whole value of being a board member. But the more information you have, the better informed you are to make a decision. And that's the goal.
You're saying a focus group is questions you present?
Yes.
It's not an open forum?
No, it's not an open forum.
To make it a popularity contest?
Absolutely not. And I'll be very clear, the focus groups take place before you get to the candidate selection. Okay? If you want to have a public forum, the public forum is designed for the person to identify themselves to the community. Some people, you know, I've done public forums in many fashions. Okay? Some they ask for somebody to do a five-minute electronic introduction of themselves. And you'll have note cards that people will write on before they come, before the presentation starts. And I'll select questions from there to ask them. I've had other people that have just said, "We want a simple introduction, a little bit on the background by the person, done verbally. We don't want the high-tech electronics or anything like that. This is not supposed to be a cutesy cell. It's supposed to be an intellectual dialogue." They'll still ask for questions and on note cards and then I'll sort out the questions and make sure they do it. And some people have, this, this is probably the most challenging was when they had a, they had all of the candidates at the same time, at the same public forum, selected the candidates, and then I would parse out the questions. That I would not recommend. That's not a comfortable one for anybody. But the popularity contest exists. If you think you're going to have that occur is whether you want to have a public forum or not. It's not in the focus group. Focus group is before you've closed the application process down. And what they'll lay out is, the other piece that's hidden in it is you may identify some questions you want to use in the interview process. You might even develop some screening as to what you're looking for. And some districts, just because of what's happening in the district and the time of year, may just decide to do it electronically. Those are some of the things we have to talk about. Don't, when I said, "I believe we can serve your needs" because I think we can customize our process enough to meet what you need to get in your selection process.
So, looking at your conceptual draft here, having a vacancy announcement roughly around April 7th and a deadline to choose interviewees on May 10th being roughly a month, do you think that's enough time to either A, receive quality applicants or is it too tight of a timeline for basically a month?
Well, I believe it'll be enough time because of the quality of the school district. Okay? If you keep your application open too long because of a school year closing starting in May, I think it's going to affect the number of people that are going to apply. But I'll tell you right now, if you would tell the WASB that they were selected this evening, when we have a, we call it an e-connection that goes out every week, we'd identify, watch closely for details about Franklin vacancy that'd go out this week and that'd go out on Monday and, and so then people will be aware of it. And, you know, if we know that, our consultants will start communicating with people as well. It's not going to be difficult to get a vacancy announcement together by the 7th because my suggestion is you do it as general as possible. And the reason is, you want the, you want the maximum number of people to apply. So, you do the general at the start and you refine. And so, that's where your, so I would assume the focus groups wouldn't occur until after, a little later. But I, I, three weeks, you'll get a number. This is, this is still good time. When you start getting in May, it's going to affect it. What I think you may have some difficulty with is getting somebody to say, "I can be in the district day one on July 1st." You might have to play with that a little bit. But I think you can make your selection pretty comfortably.
Thanks.
What about school boards that didn't renew contracts in January and are going through this process right now? So, they've got superintendent searches going on right now. Would those candidates, who are probably the top candidates who have applied, be able to apply here?
Well, let me indicate that departures from school district happen for various reasons. One, it's for professional advancement because somebody sees it as a larger district. Two, you'll notice that we have a 95% retention rate after the first year of service. That's kind of important because a lot of times superintendents will get selected and there are some board members that appear because of election that weren't on the district. So, they already may have two or post, potentially it could be three board members. And then that could change and then by the end of the second year, it could be more than that. So, obviously, there could be a philosophical shift in a board of education. I mean, we've watched some contentious elections as, as a country. And so, those are things. I don't think that's happening in Franklin, but I know that it does occasionally happen. But we would be honest in our assessment of candidates as to what the issues are behind any of the applicants that are applied. That's the best I can give you in an answer. We do, we believe it's not appropriate to say somebody can't apply for a position. Okay? It's our job to identify where they fall in the group. And somebody that's in the lowest tier, I'm identifying to you, it's not a strong candidate. It's somebody you really should think at least two, if not three, times about whether you want to consider interviewing.
And what about the market generally? Is it a situation where there are more positions than there are applicants? Or, you know, are you seeing a pretty, from your experience, are you seeing a pretty good number of applicants?
I'm seeing the applicants improve. Okay? And I'd say the, the larger school districts, school districts in the metropolitan Milwaukee area and Madison and Fox Valley get a stronger number of candidates. But in some of the rural districts, we don't get as many candidates. Act 10 has had an impact on people's desire to move to Wisconsin. It's starting to change, but it has had an impact. And I'd say that we're watching some of the aging in the education field. There's not as many people in the entire workforce. And because of the cuts that school have experienced in the past, they don't have the same depth in their central offices. So, I think you're getting younger and less experienced people applying. I mean, that's the reality of what's there. We have, I've read some school districts that said they've had 50 candidates. We don't consider, we won't give you a number of 50 unless there's 50 completed applications. I have not seen 50 applications in the last couple of years completed. I've seen 50 inquiries, but that's not 50 applications. And boards of education are more concerned about completed numbers. You'll see, you should see in the teens through the twenties in a district of this size. And this time of year. And, you know, you may, one of the things I'd be talking to you about in a planning session, and that would be in a confidential session, but if you have, several, some people have a grow your own internal candidate pool, I'd be telling you to think about doing some interviewing of them first. Because if you've got strong internal candidates, it could affect how many people might apply. Unless you say, internal candidates are going to be ranked against external candidates, they will not be guaranteed an interview. That's a choice. Education is a small circle. People talk. As, as you would expect. I mean, it happens in business as well. There's two things though I, I want you to be aware of. There's been things in the press. We, once the board of education decides the candidates they're interviewing, and we usually say around six, there's no guarantee that that, those names can be remain confidential. There's been an attorney general opinion that's expanded what was originally a discretion on a University of Wisconsin athletic director that said if it was above five, there's, that's not true. There's been some school districts that have experienced difficulties by not following that in the law. And we don't, if you say you'd like to interview somebody, we would tell the candidates that until they accept the interview, we wouldn't release the name to the press. And then the district decides whether we're only going to release the names to the press if somebody asks or they're going to do a press release on it. I mean, every district does a little different. But we want to make sure we know that stuff upfront. Judy's probably dealt with that a lot?
Just a little.
Just a little bit, right? She's probably got speed dial on all those other places. The other thing that caused some difficulty for a school district is the contract, and I'll leave a copy of what we use as a contract so you can see that as well. I don't have 13 copies, but I've got at least a couple so that you can share. And you, you would have to approve that in an open session. There've been some districts that have made it, they negotiated it in, it wasn't with the WASB, but with another firm did it in closed session. They had some difficulties as to whether it was a legal contract or not. So, we would tell you that that needs to be done in an open session. I'm sure you know that, but I tried to make sure that the board of education doesn't get in trouble in the process and we're upfront all the way along. Did I miss anything Connie or George at this point?
No, I think, I think you've covered everything. I would like to just stress that each of the three of us are retired superintendents. So, we've been through that, been through the process a number of times. But I do, I do want to stress that we are retired, which means that this is our day job. This is what we do now. We work on these kinds of searches. So, none of us are doing something different in the daytime. This is what we do. And we would be more than happy to work with this school district. And I think we would have a good success here, I think, in terms of finding a very, very strong candidate to continue the excellent programs that you have here. Including your musical, Joseph's Amazing Technicolor, that's coming out there, so.
And I think we are in a, you know, a trend because of retirements and so forth. Some districts doing the grow your own so that they're working through that, you know, that they kind of have a succession plan in essence. Sometimes they get robbed with their very good succession plan candidates, but, but they exist. And the other, the other thing is there, there are some very good persons obviously out there getting ready or are ready to be in the field. You know, everybody kind of, everybody has to have that first opportunity. You know, another thing we do as we go and we speak at the universities and colleges that have superintendent training programs and we talk to their students, you know. So, you've got persons out there, I, my grandchildren, a couple of my grandchildren are in Puywaki and Puywaki just announced their two finalists are an internal who's part of their grow your own and then the Elm Brook, one of the Elm Brook directors of learning and instruction. So, neither one of the finalists for the candidate for the Puywaki School District are sitting superintendents. And, you know, they're following a superintendent of the year of all the winning school district. They've got some huge shoes to fill, but they have selected somebody new to the, to the field.
Are there any more questions? Well, we thank you very much for giving your presentation. Did you, did you all come from Madison? I knew you came from Greenfield.
I'm from Kalamazoo.
Kalamazoo.
Contract.
And I actually do have a day job, two days a week, but I'm based in. I, I have to say that.
Nice to meet you.
Two things that I like were usually questions that come up as, what does the contract look like and what's the references look like? So, I left the reference list and I left the contract for your district. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for your time.
All right. Item nine C is the resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of approximately $8,080,000 general obligation refunding bonds. Is an action item, Mr. Millsor?
This is the last piece of our financing for the referendum project. It is refunding bonds, which means we're paying off the note that we took out in December. We had competitive bids today. The winning bid was at 3.4186% from Janie Montgomery Scott LLC. And putting all of these pieces together, we had projected in the referendum for our information that the increase for, for debt service would be 65 cents per thousand of assessed value and we're coming in at 60 cents. So, it's $5 less per 100,000 assessed than, than we had projected. So, we, we just need to approve the resolution authorizing that sale and then it'll become effective April 12th.
Do I hear a motion approving the resolution authorizing the issuance and sale of approximately $80,080,000 general obligation refunding bonds?
Eight million.
Is that what I saw?
Eighty.
Extra zero.
You said eighty, I hope that's okay.
Oh, my. Let's get, okay. Eight million, eighty.
Yeah, two in those schools.
Thousand dollars, general.
So, some of them.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen, second by Mrs. Witkowski. Is there any discussion?
Is it 20-year or 25-year?
Twenty.
Twenty.
Okay. No further discussion. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Is there any discussion?
Is it twenty year, or twenty-five year?
Twenty.
Twenty.
Okay, no further discussion, can we have a roll call please?
Yes. Mr. Gamble?
Yes.
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
At ICS.
Motion clear, seven zero. Thank you. Item ninety is a construction update. Mr. Millsor?
Yes. We had another meeting with our architects. We're working with them to further delineate the interior spaces and make sure that they work so that the building is absolutely the best it can be. Moved some things around, made some changes. Also worked on some technical items, like the stormwater retention, the erosion control, the landscaping utilities and that, to take that to the next level as well. So we're getting close on that. The architects have filed a site, some of the preliminary site information with the city now to get that process moving, because I believe there's a sixty day timeframe on that. And we want to move forward so that we can get that going. And the architects will be here on April twelfth to meet with the board and give them a presentation showing the layout of the building and where things are at right now.
Question, when you get together, and, because we've had a couple of these updates before, and it's usually we get together, we take a look at some things, we make a few changes, move some things around. It's been some pretty standard language. Do you look at the whole building layout, and then they come back with some other ideas, and then you kind of spitball a little bit? Or are you working on like in a section at a time and you make some changes? Where do these, these changes come from?
Yeah, it's both. You're, you're looking at, at sections and how they work, specific classrooms, special use classrooms, and how, how they were designed originally. You give them some ideas, maybe that's not going to work for us, or we'd like to see two or three other options. They come in with two or three other options. We discuss how instruction would take place with the room that way, and, and maybe pick one of those. And, and they come back with, with that as a kind of a final product after that. We're doing all the individual areas and then looking at the building as a whole. How, how students move through the building, how visitors move through the building, how the different pieces are used, and there's obviously a lot to it. And it isn't, it isn't the first time where we say, okay, let, that's great, or that'll work, or let's try that, they come back and then we say, no, that's not going to work either. Here's the problem with that. And sometimes with that, then we'll have to move something around, and then that creates other, other issues that we need to fix at that point. So it's, you think about maybe how many times you would look at a plan for building a house, which is two thousand square feet, and this is two hundred thousand square feet of space. And it takes a lot of people at the table, all thinking of their particular area and how it's going to work for kids and for visitors and staff to really bring it into focus.
One of the first meetings I attended, they brought in a specialist who deals with setup of a kitchen. And she was an absolute expert on, you know, how this should be set up. So she, our food service employees were there, and she asked very specific questions about what we do, what we want to do, and she was directly involved in the layout of the kitchen and what, what equipment we need and where it should be. So it's very detailed, takes a lot of time.
That was one of my other points I was going to make. Where along the process do you bring in the educators where they're in the classroom and they can offer the feedback, when you say, well, will work, what won't work? They know, because they're there. So in that, in that example, the kitchen staff was part of it. So are the educators there at these meetings? Or do you have side meetings with them to get some feedback and then, because you can't have everybody at this?
No, you can't have everybody at the table. So, so we have the instructional folks there, we have the principals, assistant principal. And then as questions come up, they will go back and talk to their staff. Now their staff already had input three times, as the architects went back to the, came to them the first time. What are you thinking, what do you need? Came away with something, went back to them and said, what if we did it this way? Got feedback and went back and said, how about that? So they've been to them three times already by the time we're looking at it. But then as we discuss things, like very specific things for the foods rooms and things like that, they'll go back and ask the question, you know, what about this or that? On, on how, how they're going to use the room and how they would be teaching.
So this, you ever apply or develop standards, so like every language arts room looks this way? I mean, we're not personalizing for a teacher.
No.
You're personalizing for a type of instruction?
Right.
So you, so there are standards somehow developed regarding different types of structural space? You know, math will be, looks like this, language arts looks like this. And if I walk through the room, I would see that, oh yes, that's a math room, that's a.
Probably not so much between math and language arts, because there isn't equipment in the room specific to that. It's mainly the rooms where there's definite equipment.
Science lab.
Whether it's, yeah, science lab, food preparation, whether it's movable equipment, is it, is it going to be stationary? And then if it's stationary, what do we lose by not being able to move it? And can it be moved? And then the other rooms need to work for a variety of, of things. We can't project that far into the future to say, you know, this room will always be math, or it'll always be language arts. It could be either. So you have to make the room work for, for everything in that case.
And do we know, I mean, have they put out bids to subcontractors? Have they selected, none of that yet?
No, we're not at that point yet. It's coming up, the first thing will be the site. There'll be four different bid packages that are going out so that we can get going and not wait until we know, you know, what color desks are going to be before we bid out.
And do we, do we approve that? Is that something that the general just basically takes over?
Yeah, the, the construction manager, that's their, one of their roles on that. Once the, once the design is done and the architect has specked out what everything looks like and, and what needs to be done, then they take that and put it into bid specifications, bring it back to the architect and they agree. We look at it as well to make sure there's nothing in there that we would like changed. And then the specifications will go out to the bidders, that'll all come back in. They'll review them first, or we can be there for the review as well, and then they'll start.
But it's not something that we have to approve?
No, it doesn't come back to the board at that point. We start getting those contracts out so that we can get going on the, on the site. And that'll be the first thing, and then it's the block work and getting the building going. And then later on, some of the furniture items and lighting and that kind of thing.
Are they targeting certain windows? Because, you know, bid climate can change, and there's some advantages to being in this window versus a different window within the year?
Right. And then that's one of the reasons that we have it split up into multiple bid packages, because it, it gets us in the ground faster so that we have more time to try and get the building up and going before it becomes winter. But we will be in cold weather, working on the building.
My question was more about the bid climate. You know, the more bidders are available during a certain time of the year, you get past a certain window, they already have work, and they're not looking for work.
It's, it's an interesting time right now, because so many districts have passed referendums. You have huge buildings going up downtown Milwaukee. There's a lot of building going on. So we are not in a contractor hungry kind of atmosphere where we're going to get low bids. It isn't going to matter, no, no. They like working for a school district because they get paid. And they get paid on time. Somehow they find that attractive as a contractor. So that's in our favor, that's in a school district's favor that that happens. But beyond that, you know, we're probably looking at a, at a time unlike in the past where the bids aren't going to be rock bottom.
About the kitchen? Decision to go to a full-service kitchen versus what we've had? What made you decide to do that?
The size of the school, number of students. We're looking at about, well, up to twelve hundred to begin with, and then a final size of thirteen hundred and fifty students, which is about the size of the high school when we put the production kitchen in the high school. So it just made sense to make this one a production kitchen as well.
Any other questions?
How did we get up to twelve hundred? The math that I remember is we had like in the seventh and eighth grade, I thought we were on seven fifty. Sixth grade, we were going to add three hundred, that was going to take us up to a thousand.
That's the number of students we'd have going into the building. If we did it now, it would, it was, yeah, a little over a thousand. But we said to begin with, we would build the building that it would house twelve hundred, that we wouldn't be immediately full.
Oh, I, I thought you were saying that we did it, we're going to have twelve hundred coming in.
No, we'd have a capacity for twelve hundred.
Okay.
In, in the rooms themselves, and then all of the common areas will have a capacity for thirteen hundred and fifty.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item E, Board Conference Report, Day at the Capitol. Was that last Thursday?
It was the fifteenth.
I think that was Wednesday.
Yes.
Larry and I went to Madison for the Day at the Capitol. And if you look under, in Board Docs, you'll see we, we each have a report in there. And I also put in some links to some of the paperwork we had. And also, there's a link to a, it's a budget report. And the budget report is really interesting. You have to go in, onto the WASB site and click on there. I, I think that'd be interesting for the directors too, to take a look at. But you want to start Larry, or just do it together?
I'll start, and if you want to add to it.
I mean, it's both basically the same, so.
It was a good, it started with a good overview of the proposed budget, and it was presented by the Secretary of the Department of Administration. And that was followed by a WASAB-led Q and A session with four legislators, Speaker Voss, Senator Olson, Representative Genesh, and Senator Schilling. And being WASAB-led questions, it was focused on the things that were important to WASAB that they saw, so is what some of their school inputs were directing them towards. It was kind of interesting to get the perspective from both sides of the political aisle from the panel. But the good news was that there will be an increase in pupil funding for this budget cycle. But there was kind of an underlying tone there that there's probably going to be a fight between the road builders and the public school system over a DOT budget shortfall. And they see that the six hundred and fifty million that's been allocated for increased in spending to our school systems as a target. Then after that was over with, we had a lunch session that was highlighted with a candidate forum between Dr. Evers and Dr. Holtz. And then after lunch, we went to the Capitol Building itself for a meet the legislature session, where we, they had already made the appointments for us. And so districts that were in a legislator's district, or school districts that were in that legislator's district, we all went en masse. So like at Senator Larson's office, we all had to pack into his small office, and there was about a dozen of us. We met with a staffer there, also with Representative Rodriguez and Skoronsky. Senator Craig had managed to reserve one of the hearing rooms, and so we had a nice, more comfortable environment there. And so we actually met with one actual legislature out of the four.
I'm going to stop you from, if you don't mind. When we were in Senator Larson's office, he had his clerk there. And I'm not going to name the school districts, but one whole school district came up there. And they came up with their resolutions that, the whole book of resolutions. And we had half an hour to share between the districts. And they took the whole half hour going through their resolution book, so nobody else could speak. And they did this everywhere we went.
They acted like it was their meeting, not a group meeting. So where I was going with it is exactly that, because each meeting, we were joined by these other school districts. The thirty minutes was not adequate to talk specific Franklin concerns. It was, we were more resigned to having to either coattail on what somebody else was saying, if it agreed with us, or it was the WASAB talking points that they gave us to go meet our legislators.
So Larry suggests that, which isn't a bad idea, that maybe we make a date where some of us who are interested, we just go up ourselves and, you know, spend fifteen minutes, minutes with each of them on our own, which might not be a bad idea. And Megan and, and Dr. Miller did find the resolution that we voted on, and we did get it faxed to each of the representatives, because that is one of the issues that was, was a WASB talking point, school start date, which, who was it, Senator, Representative Voss said, that's not going to pass. He was the one, he just said, that's not going to pass. Although the other three, they.
Senator Olson was more against it than any of the other three, because he represents Wisconsin Dells.
Yeah, so he was really vocal.
Yeah, so he's got a constituent base that would be pushing him not to support it.
Yeah.
No one spoke up to cut this other district off?
Right?
That's what I'm taking up all the time.
Oh, you, you couldn't, you just couldn't. They, they made sure, they ran in there right away.
They took all the seats at the table. So we were all, everybody else was on the edges.
Although, you know, they covered everything everyone else had to say, so you can get words in. But, and then when I went to Representative Rodriguez's office, I, I know her stance on vouchers is very strong, and so I made sure I pointed that out to her. But she said, oh, no, 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 we're, we're working on that. You know, they're going to, they're going to have to have the same standards as, as everyone else, which isn't quite true. And then I did get an email today from Representative Skoronsky's office saying, kind of, he won't take a stance on the, per pupil funding, going from the, the base versus.
Everybody was pretty much saying that the two hundred first year, two hundred and four dollar second year was not enough. And.
Or two fifty, the second, is it?
It was two oh four.
Two oh four, yeah.
And as Speaker Voss had said during the Q and A session, we were able to get something going into it. Maybe this can be a trend going forward. But the other, these other districts, one of them was, we need to be at two eighty-five. Two hundred just doesn't cut it. And Representative Craig, or not Senator Craig now, just looked at this guy straight in the eye and said, you get two hundred. The other's not going to happen.
Representative Skoronsky just says it's up to the Finance Committee. Well, that's not true. It's not up to the Finance Committee. And, I don't know. Anything else?
Overall, a good day?
It was, yeah, overall, it was a good day. Representative, or Senator Craig did pretty much confirm that the big fight's going to be the three hundred and sixty million dollar DOT shortfall. And everybody's eyes are on the public school plus-up as a way of trying to recoup some of that. And so being proactive, talking to legislators and saying that that needs to stay is obviously something we need to do. And then, as we mentioned, maybe planning our own day where we could just make a trip over there and talk one-on-one with either the legislators or their staffers to talk specific Franklin issues would be much more productive.
But what's really a shame is that we're supposed to be bipartisan. We are, as we sit at this table. But you, you go there and, you know, everything, everything is so split. And it's just all over the place, and they really, you know, it's true, they really won't listen to you. I, I think it is true, they, it's the citizens. Citizens really have to be convinced to talk to legislators. I mean, even if a representative won't even, he won't even return the email, he has his staffer do it, and he won't commit. I think that's sad. Yeah, try, if you have five minutes to just look over this, you know, this is the printed version of it, but the.
So I mean, we're all citizens in, in their districts, but so we go approach them as a citizen. That carries more weight than if we say we.
a citizen, that carries more weight than if we say we represent them.
Well, because you vote for them.
Right. Well, see, when we went as, if you say you're on a school board, like, oh, that, well, that doesn't count. Let's see, when we went with the big gaggle right after the WASAB meeting, we're looked at as nothing more than any other lobbyist coming down the hallway. To be honest, that's what they're doing. Whereas if we were to go over separately, then it's a more personal meeting with them. We're not looked at as just some other lobbyist coming in to, as one former legislator put it, to do the penguin walk through the hallways.
But we did hear that a lot of the ones up at the legislators in the north and northwest, they seem to spend a lot of time in those school districts, you know, from hearing them talk, you know, riding the buses and visiting the districts, and maybe because there's less school districts, they have time to do that. But it's interesting.
Thanks.
Thanks for recording back.
Thanks for going. Where are we here? Item F, the Treasurers' Report is available in the Board Docs library. And, okay, I have to phone my agenda. Now, I am, this is going to be a long one, Jerry. I'm looking for a motion to enter into closed session for the purposes stated below. Ten A, a discussion of negotiation strategy regarding a land purchase pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight five sub one sub E. B, discussion, consideration, and issuance of preliminary notices of non-renewal for specific employees pursuant to Wisconsin Statutes nineteen point eight five sub one, sub C, and sub F. C, discussion of the performance of specific administrative employees of the district pursuant to Wisconsin Statutes nineteen point eight five sub one, sub C, and sub F. D, consideration of proposed contract with WASB for the conduct of an administrator search, the negotiation strategy for such contract, and whether the negotiation strategy should include seeking other bids for such a search pursuant to Wisconsin Statute nineteen point eight five sub one sub E. And E, discussion of the planned duration of the interim district administrator position and the impact of that discussion on the negotiation strategy to be adopted for the selection of a permanent district administrator pursuant to Wisconsin Statutes nineteen point eight five sub one, sub C, sub E, and sub F. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen, is there any discussion? Hearing none, can we have a roll call, please, Mr. Alexandrovich?
Mrs. Larson.
Aye.
Mr. Lewis.
Aye.
Mr. Gamble.
Aye.
Mrs. Evans.
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen.
Aye.
Mrs. Witkowski.
Aye.
And I say yes.
Motion carries seven zero. Do we need a three-minute recess? I know I have something to sign.
We need heat in here. That's what we need, is heat.
Okay, we're back in open session at eleven fourteen, and we're looking, I'm looking for a motion for approval of the preliminary notices as presented.
Preliminary notices of non-renewal.
Of non, I'm sorry. Preliminary notices of non-renewal as presented. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Larson.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Item thirteen, future agenda items. We have a board self-evaluation on April 12th. We have the architect's presentation on April 12th, board conference report from the NSBA Convention on April 26th, and the board reorganizational meeting on April 26th. And Megan will be sending out the board survey, I believe, tomorrow. So I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Lewis, second by Mr. Nielsen, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. You are adjourned at eleven sixteen.